So good Saturday morning, everyone. So I will call this meeting of the special meeting of the council of the village of Fundy Albert for January sixth, twenty twenty four to order. The agenda for this special meeting of council was for today was circulated in advance. I would accept the motion to adopt the agenda as circulated. So moved by Council Land and seconded by Counselor Jonah. Any questions on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by stating aye. Opposed, if any, motions carried unanimously. And we do have two counselors who are taking part remotely. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare in relation to the agenda items for today? There being none, we'll move on to the topic number four, which is the twenty twenty four general operating budget. So this council has met on seven separate occasions to consider the elements that will make up the general operating and utility budgets for Fundy Albert. Throughout our discussions, the focus was on striking a balance between limiting the impact on taxpayers and ensuring that our local government has the resources to meet service delivery expectations. We feel what is being presented for approval this morning strikes that balance. There continues to be a difference in the manner in which shared costs are shared between the former incorporated municipalities and the former local service districts. Where costs are shared with all subunits, the costs are shared through an inside rate of a hundred percent for the former incorporated municipalities and a basic rate of nine percent for the former LSDs. The general operating budget includes expenditures of five million nine hundred eighty four thousand and one hundred and twenty one dollars and a tax warrant of four million nine hundred and seventy five thousand and thirty three dollars. Council must now adopt a resolution to approve the budget. Can I have someone read that motion, please?
Yep, be it resolved that sum of five million nine hundred eighty five dollars, one hundred and twenty one dollars be the total operating budget of the local government, that the sum of four million nine hundred seventy five and thirty three dollars be the warrant of the local government for the ensuing year and that the tax rates for the local government be as listed before. Tax authority six eight one dash zero residential rate one dollar point five six six nine, non-residential rate two point six six three six seven, heavy industrial two point six six three seven. Tax authority six eight one dash one residential rate point five seven nine nine, non-residential rate point nine eight five eight, heavy industrial point nine eight five eight. Tax authority six eighty one dash two residential rate point five seven nine nine, non-residential rate point nine eight five eight, heavy industrial point nine eight five eight. Tax authority number six eight one dash three residential rate point five three six one, non-residential rate point nine one one four, heavy industrial rate point nine one one four. Tax authority number six eight one dash four residential rate one point three nine three six, non-residential rate two point three six nine one, heavy industrial rate two point three six nine one. Tax authority number six eight one dash five residential rate point five seven nine nine, non-residential rate point nine eight five eight, heavy industrial rate point nine eight five eight. Tax authority number six eight one dash six residential rate one point three nine three six, non-residential rate two point three six nine one, heavy industrial rate two point three six nine one. Tax authority number six eight one dash seven residential rate point five seven nine nine, non-residential rate point nine eight five eight, heavy industrial rate point nine eight five eight. The council orders and directs the levying of the Minister of Local Government of the set amount on real property liable to the taxation under the Assessment Act within the local government of Fundy Albert.
So moved by Counselor Elderton, seconded on that motion, seconded by Counselor Coates. Any discussion on the motion? I do have a few things to say and for the folks that are listening in, I'll provide the the actual community which the taxation rates or the former local service districts and and which former LSD those taxing authorities relate to, but I'll open it up for any discussion or questions on the motion. Counselor Elderton, since you adopted the resolution or you passed the resolution, oh, I did, since you adopted the resolution, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, I just, I wanted just to reiterate that we didn't have to reiterate what you had said earlier. We had spent a lot of time going through this. It's our first year of doing it. It was a bit of time consuming and but I do believe we've we've done well. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Coates, you're the second on the motion. Do you have any comments to provide?
Uh, just there one question, uh, six eight one, uh, three, maybe, uh, an explanation. I know we talked about it, but to give the public why there's a difference in that three.
Yes, I will. I'll touch on it.
Yep.
Any other counselors have any comments or questions to provide? Counselor Arrow, anything to provide?
Yes, yes, I do. I have a number of remarks to make. The the first one, Bob or the mayor, can you just confirm that the budget as being presented today and the details that support it will in fact be available for viewing by the public?
Um, I would say yes, counselor, and in fact, I think we have an onus. My preference would have been to have consultations on the budget prior to it being adopted, but because of the lateness of it, that wasn't possible. So I think we owe it to the public to go into the various locations and provide an explanation of what the budget means and to do that in person rather than just simply post it.
Right, and it's my preference. And I know in the past, in in Alma at least, um, the the entire budget template, call it, was available for viewing in the village office by any member of the public. They could come in and see all of the all of the amounts. So that that will stand for Fundy Albert.
Absolutely. That's a that's a blank record. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll I'll be quite quick. I'll go through a number of things here that I just think are important. Like I I will vote in support of this budget, but I'm doing so with some reservations. And I'll just outline what those are. From the process side of things, clearly, we're very, very late in doing this, which should have been done in 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 November. And I think it's important to for the public to realize that even now with us doing this, that we're doing it without uh, certain essential elements that should have been in place being in place, and most notably, that is the audited financial statements for the three former municipalities from twenty twenty two. Because those audited financial statements include surpluses that find their way into this budget. And we do know what these surpluses are, but we've never actually approved these audited financial statements. And in the case of Hillsborough, we've never even seen it yet as council members. So this is is not correct. We know that. We're in a way, we're under duress in having to do this to make sure that we have an approved budget, but I think it's important to note that. On the revenue side of things, which is the the tax warrant and and our other sources of revenue, I'm still concerned on that in that we are imposing a one point seven percent premium for all non-residential properties. So this, we have flexibility as a council under the law to have that number anywhere between one point four and one point seven. And we are going with the max premium that is applied to all residential properties. And I think in the future, we need to try and 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 find a way that we can lower that to promote our businesses in the community. But for this year, the the council, really, I would prefer that we had tried to find a way, but we're not. So I think it's important to recognize that. On the revenue side, I also am concerned the outside role, the outsized role that these surpluses from the former municipalities continue to play. So the surpluses that were in the former municipalities are rolling over into this budget and are skewing the results, which I'm troubled by that because all of our assets were 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 essentially amalgamated into a shared pot from day one. This would be our buildings, our vehicles that came from the former municipalities and so forth. Yet the surpluses did did not, and it's skewing the results. On the expenditure side of things, so our budget now is in fact fifteen point five percent greater in twenty twenty four than in twenty twenty three. That's a huge increase, far greater than the inflation rate for the country or New Brunswick. And I'm concerned about that. I realize that we're we're accounting for new services, as you pointed out, Mayor, and I think this is this is good. I think in the future, we need to try and be more efficient in in how we're delivering our services. There's been quite a bit of inefficiencies this year with the traffic back and forth all across the entity, wasting gas and time. And so I think the fifteen point five percent increase is something that we need to be trying to be preventing next year. Now, in terms of the final outcome, which are the tax rates that Counselor Elder can just read out for the different subunits. And I know, I think the mayor is going to explain actually who's who in the zoo with those different dash numbers. But what concerns me about the outcome is that we still end up having extensive or large differentials in tax rates between the different elements of our community, to the point, for instance, that the good news is is the differentials are getting smaller. So the 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 differential between the highest tax rate, which happens to be Alma, and the lowest tax rate, which is happens to be the Hillsborough LSD, is smaller in twenty twenty four than it was in twenty twenty three. So this is the good news. The the bad news, in my view, is is the differentials are still exceedingly large. For instance, the Alma tax rate that we're about to approve is sixty five percent higher than in the Hillsborough LSD area. In the Alma tax rate is also twelve point four percent higher than any of the other two former villages, which are the same for this year. And so I still continue to find that troublesome, but this is in part the the hand that we were dealt by the province. So my last last comment is about the future and where we're heading in future years. And I I continue to be worried, I would say, about what's going to happen when the province decides what they're going to do about the road maintenance in the local service district areas. Because as I think most people would know, that the LSD areas play a flat rate of point four one one five dollars per hundred dollars of assessment for all of their DTI road services. And that's not included in these tax rates, but for the rest of the areas within Fundy Albert, the local taxpayers and through the rates, that's why we see the rates are so much higher in the former municipalities than the LSD areas. We're paying for our own road maintenance. At some point, the provinces said that it's all going to be one, and the point four one one five numbers that the LSD areas are definitely not supportable i- if it's our own kind of operation doing that. So in the future, I don't know what's going to happen there, but it's 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 cause for concern, I think, in the LSD areas, and I think they need to be engaging with their provincial counterparts sooner than later. But that's it. Thank you. I will vote for this resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Russell, do you have any comments or questions?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
All right, just to to some of what I'm going to go through, Counselor Arrow is probably going to respond to some of the the questions. I agree that, you know, we've been dealt this hand. This is not something that we are pleased with. I think one of the first comments, I guess, is there is a significant increase in the budget from last year or two thousand and twenty three to what is being proposed or what is being adopted this this afternoon or this morning, and that is almost an increase of eight hundred thousand dollars. It's an increase of approximately eight hundred thousand dollars as compared to twenty twenty three. A large part of that, there are two main elements of it, but a large part of that is the fact that prior to bringing all the communities together, each municipality had their own internal administrative structure, and then they combined everything into one. Then they took the responsibilities for most of the other aspects of the former local service districts. So we went from having a a total budget of approximately, I'd say, slightly more than a million dollars. If we looked at everything, it's probably in the range of a million five, a million eight. But now we're at six million. So that takes a lot of administrative infrastructure to manage all that. So we we had a situation where we had one CIO clerk, we had one treasurer, and we had a director of community services. That was all the administrative structure that we had. And we soon recognized after we got started that that's just simply not enough. It's asking too much of our employees to to take on. So for that reason, we have created, and I'll go through some of the some of the 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 actual numbers in terms of staff, but it's created a situation where if we didn't do anything, we were doomed to fail. So this is in a way, I agree that this is a significant increase from last year, but going into twenty twenty five, we should not see that significant of a jump from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. Now, I will go through some of the some of the numbers. So in general government services, which is administration and the cost of council, the budget is increased by twenty three point five percent, largely the result of increases in in the wages related to two new positions. One is an assistant clerk position, and the other is a full-time accounting clerk. We did have a full-time, we had hired an accounting clerk last year, but that wasn't formalized as an official additional position. So that that significantly increased the cost. Police protection, that's a local service. That's up by three percent compared to twenty twenty three. So a little over thirty thousand dollars. Fire protection costs are up by sixteen point eight percent. That's a significant increase. There have been increases in the cost of fuel, training, and firefighting equipment, and we rely on these people to respond to emergency situations. We need to make sure that they're well equipped. Prior to twenty twenty four, volunteer firefighters were not all provided honorariums for their volunteerism, so we're leveling the playing field there. And departments are also will see a need to consider migrating from the current analog radio system to the trunk mobile system. And I believe, Counselor Arrow, you mentioned yesterday, there's somewhere in the range of seventy thousand included in this budget increase for fire protection specifically for that. Now, that is not all the cost to migrate the totality into Trump mobile, but rather, it's only a portion of it. So we would like to see that happen. It's going to happen, whether we're whether we're prepared for it or not. They're going to stop looking after the analog system. So we're we're hoping to accomplish is pay for some of it this year and some of it next year. Emergency measures, that has seen a significant jump, but it's only from seventy five hundred dollars a year to twenty five thousand dollars a year. And we saw in early two thousand and twenty three, when they had the ice storm, that uh, seven thousand five hundred dollars doesn't go very far when we are responsible for the cost of responding to those emergencies. So if we don't use that money, then we can place it into a reserve to build a rainy day fund and then have that in the event that we have a significant uh, uh, emergency event. And based on climate change, based on everything that we've seen, the the number of storms that we've seen, the severity of the storms, it's not a matter of if that's going to happen, it's a matter of when it's going to happen. Other protection, which is bylaw enforcement and so on. That's slightly down from twenty twenty three, but this includes bylaw enforcement for matters such as unsightly and dangerous premises enforcement throughout Fundy Albert. For more local enforcement, parking bylaws, animal control, and for the Fundy Albert share of regional service commission costs related to public safety. Now, I say that it's down, but there, within the budgets from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, there have been a number of the movement of costs from one service to another. So it doesn't necessarily mean we're spending less. It just means that in some cases, some of those expenditures are being shown in other areas. Transportation services, this is the biggest one. This is a shared service for municipal, formerly incorporated municipalities. This does not affect the local service districts. The costs increased by thirty six point nine percent, some of which is a result in how costs are apportioned in the budget. In twenty twenty three, some public works personnel costs were attributed to various services such as solid waste collection, parks, recreation, and culture. These costs are now all shown in transportation services. In addition, the cost of public works buildings is now shown in transportation services. Hillsborough snow removal has increased from ninety six thousand five hundred and thirty eight, and that's only for for the municipality, the former municipality of Hillsborough. Increase from ninety six thousand five hundred and thirty eight to our budget for this year is one hundred and eighty one thousand six hundred and sixty six, an increase of more than eighty eight percent from twenty twenty three. An amount of funding has been allotted for ditches and cover in the community of Alma in recognition of the significant investment that's required. The idea there being to build a reserve to be able to fix some some as of yet unresolved issues. Lastly, there is a need for two new positions, the works superintendent and the labor, resulting from the vast amount of work responsibilities and geographical distances between the former incorporated municipalities. This was a definite struggle for us in twenty twenty three, and we need to get a handle. Environmental health services, which is a local service, there's been a twenty eight point five percent increase related to environmental health services, including the increases in costs of solid waste collection through Fundy Albert, the costs of handling solid waste by Eco three sixty, as well as costs related to planning through Plan three sixty. Public health services, there's a sixty nine percent reduction, which is due mainly to the fact that we had or that the former village of Hillsborough was previously paying for a doctor's office rent and part of a a lease for a uh, satellite office of the Albert County Community Health Center. We're now no longer paying that. So that's why there's a significant reduction there. Environmental development services, local and shared services, includes planning, community development, economic development, and tourism. Overall, there's a one point four percent increase from twenty twenty three. Recreation and culture services, which is a shared service, there has been a reduction of about eleven point eight percent, most of which is a result of no longer apportioning general public works employee salaries to the service. This service includes funding for parks, playgrounds, arena, the cost of arena attendance salaries, which they are during the summertime, public works employees, but during the wintertime, when the arena is operating, there are portion to that particular cost, which is a shared service for all former incorporated and local service districts. And the museums and pool. Lastly, fiscal services, which is some are local costs and some are shared. There's a point two percent increase in this budget. It includes the cost of borrowing for a new fire truck for the Riverside Albert Fire Department. So the impacts on tax rates really is as follows, and the taxing authority six eighty one dash zero is the former village of Alma, the residential rate of one point five six six nine, last year's rate of one point five six six nine. So there was no increase for the former village of Alma. And as Counselor Arrow pointed out, the differential, they were the highest tax rate of all of Fundy Albert. For taxing authority six eighty one dash one, which is the Alma LSD, the residential rate of five point five seven nine nine, the previous rate for last year was point five two two three, so it's an increase of point zero five seven six, which really is five point seven six cents per hundred dollars of assessment. Taxing authority six eighty one dash two, which is the Harvey LSD, the residential rate of point seven nine point five seven nine nine, the residential rate last year was point five six one nine, which is an increase of one point eight three cents per hundred dollars of assessment. The taxing authority six eighty one dash three, the Hillsborough Local Service District, the residential rate is point five three six one. Uh, last year was point four six six one, and for an increase of seven cents per hundred dollars of assessment. Taxing authority six eighty one dash four, which is the former village of Hillsborough, the tet residential rate of one point three nine three, uh, three nine three six. Last year's rate was one point three zero two six for an increase of nine point one cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Some of the big drivers there are, as I mentioned, are the new, the new solid waste collection contract, but also primarily the new snow clearing contract, which is up by eighty eight percent. Taxing authority six eighty one dash five, which is the Hopewell Local Service District, the residential rate of point five seven nine nine. The the last year, the rate was point five two two six. That's an increase of five point seven three cents per hundred dollars of assessment. The taxing authority six eighty one dash six, the former village of Riverside Albert, the tax, the residential rate was one point three nine three six. Last year was one point three nine three six, so for a zero increase for the former village of Riverside Albert. Lastly, the Coverdale Local Service District, which was taxation authority six eighty one dash seven, the rate for twenty twenty four will be five point five seven nine nine, the residential rate last year was point five zero zero one for an increase of seven point nine eight cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. That that is the explanation. And as you pointed, Counselor Arrow, I think we owe it to the residents in all the former local service districts and the former municipalities to meet with them and to explain, at least explain the reasons for those increases. Anything, anyone else have any other comments they want to provide?
If you don't mind, Mayor, I would I would ask or add one little thing that I think is is the community would like to know is that in all the expenditure increases, a notable hold of a zero increase would be for the council salaries. So mayor and counselors have had zero increase in our salaries. And so too has actually all of our staff for twenty twenty four. And so they're they're it's important to realize that we're we're making attempts to hold hold the line on on things that we do have some discretion with, and and that's happened. And just highlight one major expenditure, which I think is a is an important one for our community, briefly mentioned it, it's their the budget includes the beginning, well, the purchasing of a fire truck, um, which are very expensive items for the Riverside Albert Fire Department, which is, of course, it's used throughout Fundy Albert and and this budget includes the first payment of which will be ongoing payments for that truck. So I think that was
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor Arrow. So unless there's any other questions on the question, all in favor of the motion to adopt the budget as presented, signify by stating aye.
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 And we've lost Counselor Ward Russell, so. Uh, so all in favor, if any going opposed, the motion's carried. Thank you very much. The next is utility budget. So on the utility budget side, all three former municipalities are seeing increases in the cost of their respective water and wastewater utilities. The most significant of these is in the former village of Alma, where the water utility is seeing an increase in rates relating to the beginning of Phase Two Water Exploration Project and an increase in cost related to the wastewater lagoon that requires investment. So a motion is required there. Someone would so be so kind as to read that. Yes, Councilman.
I'll read that motion. Be resolved that pursuant to subsection one seventeen dash four of the Local Governors Act, the total budget for the water and wastewater utility for the ensuing year would consist of a total revenues of one million three hundred twenty one thousand eight hundred seventy four dollars and total expenditures of one million three hundred twenty one thousand eight hundred seventy four dollars.
So moved by Councilman. Is there a second on that motion, seconded by Counselor Jonah? So moved by councillor Land. Is there a secondary on that motion, seconded by councillor Jonah? Any questions or comments on the motion?
Right, I just drawn here, the minor um just addition there, Mayor, is that what the the. Sizable increase in Alma does also include the costs. In fact, it's driven largely by the costs associated with the temporary. Fundy Park water uh supply that we will be needing again this year in twenty twenty four. But hopefully never again with, once the new system comes on board.
Correct, correct. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Uh. I would add that uh the rates are as follows in the community, so the total wastewater and water. Uh charges for the community of Alma, and then these are all spelt out in a in a form. That includes revenues from other sources, but the total wastewater charges that are to be uh to be taken on by residential users. And uh end businesses alike through user charges are three hundred and eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. So the water service charge in the community of Alma would be six hundred and ninety four dollars a year. Wastewater charges of six hundred and sixty six dollars a year for a total of one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars a year. In Hillsborough, the total water and wastewater charges for the community are four hundred and ninety seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. The water service charges of three hundred and forty dollars, wastewater service of five hundred dollars for. No, that, uh, no. Sorry, my numbers are incorrect, but the total wastewater charges is five hundred ninety two dollars. Uh Riverside Albert, uh the. For the community of Riverside Albert, the total charges are two hundred and fifty one thousand five hundred and fifty one. For a total uh for a total water and wastewater charges of nine hundred and thirty nine uh dollars per year. So the water and wastewater charges are seeing, are are all seeing an increase, but it's costing more to operate these facilities. And the one thing that hasn't been factored into the equation is the fact that uh NB Power has asked us petition the government. For a ten percent increase in power rates. If that happens, that will, that is not budgeted in these rates. There was a, there was an increase expected. I believe our treasurer indicated somewhere around seven percent. So if those top up at ten percent, uh we're we're going to have some some concerns there. But as uh as councillor Arrow pointed out, one of the, there are a couple of. Uh there are a couple of things happening with the water and wastewater in the community of Alma, which has seen the most significant increase, and one of which is. Going from phase one to phase two of water exploration, and then secondly is the the uh the temporary water supply. Last year, we were kind of hit with that kind of in-year. It wasn't budgeted for, but we have an obligation to budget for that. And that's, I believe, it's around, it's slightly more than fifty one thousand dollars. So that's a significant uh hit for the uh residents. Of the community of Alma and and business owners. Uh the I, the the good news is that that should be a one-time cost, so in twenty twenty six. Or twenty twenty five, when we get ready for twenty twenty five, assuming that at least part of the system is built. So that we're not relying on that temporary water supply, that should disappear completely. Any other questions or comments? If not, uh on the motion, all in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any? Uh everyone, uh there's no one opposed, the motion's carried unanimously. So that uh concludes the business that we have this morning, so I thank everyone for attending. And uh may I have a motion to adjourn, please? So moved by councillor Coates. So I will just turn off the recording.